Regular meeting number 31 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Faver, would you please leave us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, council is pleased to be joined by By iTunes, by Bishop Hezekiah Martin, Southville Baptist Church. Bishop, welcome back to council. Thank you, Bishop. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
No, at this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of councils? Councilmember Tyce, or Brown, Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I do have one resolution. I'd first like to ask Yvonne Jordan to please approach the podium. Resolution 0185X2019, to recognize Yvonne Y. Jordan in honor of her 31 years of distinguished service to the city of Columbus. Whereas Yvonne Jordan began her career with the Columbus Division of Police in 1988 and served as a patrol officer, claims officer, and training officer during her tenure. And whereas upon leaving the Columbus Division of Police in 2009, Ms. Jordan served as Deputy Director of Operations for the Ohio Department of Public Safety's Investigative Unit. And whereas since 2013, Ms. Jordan has served as the Coordinator of the Columbus Department of Public Safety Teen and Police Service TAPS Academy. And whereas the Teens and Police Service TAPS Academy is a program within Columbus City Schools in conjunction with the Columbus Division of Police, Columbus Department of Public Safety, and the Franklin County Juvenile Court, which pairs at-risk youth with police officers and mentors. Whereas the TAPS Academy has a mission of developing and enhancing relationships between at-risk youth and law enforcement while providing students with the tools they need to become better citizens in their communities. And whereas Ms. Jordan has been an integral part of the success of the TAPS Academy in Columbus, her stewardship of the program has truly made a significant impact on the lives of young people and law enforcement officers involved. Now for be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby express its appreciation for the outstanding contributions that have been made by Yvonne Jordan during her 31 years of public service to the city of Columbus, and this council congratulates her on retirement. I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Do we have any comments for my colleagues? If not, Deputy Director Stewart?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before I say anything, I'd like to invite Dr. Chanel Jones with the Franklin University Criminal Justice Program to have a few words.
Dr. Jones?
Right. So.
Oh, thank you. There we go.
All right. Mic check. So I just want to congratulate Ms. Yvonne as the National Director of Research and present her with a letter of thanks for all that she has done.
If I may, I'll just stand up and say this. I've known Officer Yvonne for a long time. As you know, and council knows, I'm sure, the TAPS Academy has been here for a considerable amount of time, and it truly has made an impact to the youth of Columbus. Without Yvonne's leadership and her passion and her drive for this program, there's no way it would have been that successful as it has been. I do have bad back from having to carry her around all those times, all those years on the police department, but I'm forgiving her for that. But congratulations, Yvonne. We'll miss you. And she wants to be a grandmother, and I don't understand that. She wants to see the prettiest babies in the world, she says. So thank you very much for your passion, your commitment for what you've done here. That's pretty much all I got to say. We're through.
Yvonne, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you so much for this honor. I'm very humbled. I never do anything for accolades. I only do it because I'm asked or I have a passion for it. It's going to be very difficult to leave Columbus. I will be relocating within the next two months to Charlotte, North Carolina, where my family, my grandchildren, all four of them. I'm so excited. But Columbus will always be my home. I am leaving a daughter here, so I have to come back every now and again. But I do want to thank Director Stewart. I've known him, I mean, he was on my oral board to become a police officer.
I'm not that old.
And he apparently voted yes to let me on the police department, and that is, that was a turning point in my life for service. So I appreciate all the friendships that I've made along the way. And again, I'm humbled by this award, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, also, in addition, I have a few announcements this evening. First, June is CPR Awareness Month. With over 600 incidents of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests happening in Columbus annually, bystander response by can and does make a difference between life and death. I'd like to urge all Columbus residents to learn hands-only CPR. It's easy to do, and it doesn't require putting your mouth on a stranger. To sign up for a class or to learn more, you can contact the Columbus Division of Fire at 614-645-6360. If you know CPR and are interested in saving a life, also, you can download the Pulse Point app. In addition, the city of Columbus has formally begun its search process for a new chief of police. Mayor Gentry has added a community engagement process to the selection efforts, making sure residents of the city of Columbus have a voice in determining what they want to see in the next Columbus Chief of Police. Columbus City Council continues our support of this process and encourages the community to participate. We're asking for your assistance in getting this information to the family members and your friends and your respective community. Your input matters as part of this election process, and there are multiple ways you can share your thoughts about what you want to see in the next Columbus Chief of Police. You can go to the city's website at columbus.gov and take the survey. You can call 311 and speak to a person. You can attend one of the remaining community forums, which are already, have had two forums that have already passed. One is on June 18th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Reeve Avenue Community Center; June 19th at 6:00 p.m. at Marion Franklin High School; June 25th at 6:00 p.m. at Columbus Urban League; and June 27th at 6:00 p.m. at St. Stevens Community House. You may have also seen street teams of community festivals trying to get people engaged in this process, and also at the Asian Festival, country music, just to name a few. To date, nearly 2,000 people have taken the survey, and we want more. So please, I ask again for the community to get engaged. Your input does matter. Also, at this particular time, Director President, I'd like to ask Director Stewart to speak to the incident that transpired over this past weekend that I think all members of council will certainly have an interest in. Director Stewart?
Yes, sir. Council President Harden, Chairman Brown, members of council. On Friday, June 7th, Columbus police were loaded to shots fired by ShotSpotter technology. During the course of securing the scene, the resident was struck by an officer. The incident is currently under review by the Columbus Division of Police. Additionally, the division is in the process of uploading extensive body-worn camera video to social media after the parts that need to be legally redacted or complete. A thorough investigation will take place, including review of body-worn camera video as well as cellphone video taken by the public. At this time, the police are asking if anyone has any additional video or any other evidence to email Sergeant Ken Crop, and I have that email address if you like it. It's K-K-R-O-P-P@columbuspolice.org. That's K-K-R-O-P-P@columbuspolice.org. We ask for anyone, everyone's patience during the course of the investigation. We pledge to be transparent during the course of the investigation, and the results of the investigation will be made available to the public.
Council President, that's all I have, unless there's some comments from my colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Doran's.
No resolutions this evening, but just wanted to make one announcement. I'd like to announce my first community hours in June will be held later this month on Saturday, June 29th, at the South High Street Library from 10:30 to noon. Folks are available that day, want to come out. Certainly hope that they'll join me. Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Faver.
Thank you, President Harden. I'd like to invite Yogi Terrell, Chris Jones, Tim Starr, Malcolm White, and Cory Faver to the podium to celebrate the city and residents of Columbus and proclaim June 14th as 614 Day in the city of Columbus. The citywide 614 Day was brought to Columbus by Johann Terrell and Warhol and Wall Street. 614 Day is reflective of the date that matches our beloved city's 614 area code, and is a special time that we reflect, respect, and honor all that makes Columbus unique. 614 Day happens every June 14th. The Day provides residents from all over the city of Columbus with an opportunity to observe our city's strong relationship with our local businesses and neighborhoods, and to show our appreciation of their support. Be prepared to be immersed in all things Columbus, including our local food, music, art, and our amazing community of supporters. If there are any questions or comments from my colleagues, I would move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. The floor is ours.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. Very much appreciated. I'm President Harden and all the great leaders here on our great state's city council. We started 614 Day a few years back in 2016 to really honor the great people who made this city so special. And so we wanted to make sure that we took the time.
All right. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mike. So like I said, we really love this city, and we know that this city is really what it is because of the great people that reside here in this city. And so 614 Day was created to really celebrate that, not just the food, but the music, the fashion, the small business, the local organizations that support our local residents. And so what better day than in June 14th to celebrate everyone who helps make our city such a great place. So every year, 614 Day has grown, and we hope that it will continue to grow into its, well, we hope it continues to grow and to become the, you know, citywide celebration that we see and envision it being. So it's going to be bigger and better this year. We ask, all of you guys want to join us? It's going to be a good time, and we're going to have, like I said, vendors there. It's going to be food, it's going to be music, it's going to be a great time, and it'll be even bigger next year. Anybody else want to say something? Oh, yeah, and it's going to be at Seven Sun located on Fourth Street. Anybody else want to say something?
Time frame?
Yes, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Anyone else want to make comments? Why are you acting shy? All right. Well, we will see everyone on June 14th in honor of 614 Day. I'd invite all my colleagues to attend. It's really, it really is a great time. And so congratulations to all of you for your effort in highlighting Columbus and all that we are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank everyone.
And then President Harden, if you would just allow me, this was a consent item that we put on today. And so in honor of, people have seen us all wearing orange today. And so this is in recognition of national gun violence awareness. Hundreds of cities around the country this weekend, including Columbus, hosted nearly 750 events to commemorate the 5th Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which was celebrated on Friday, June 7th. The inaugural National Gun Violence Prevention Day occurred in 2015. The Day was organized in part to memorialize the 2013 death of 15-year-old Hadiya Pendleton, a Chicago teen who was shot and killed one week after appearing in President Obama's second inaugural parade. Ms. Pendleton's friends wore orange to raise awareness to senseless gun violence, since hunters also wear orange for gun safety as a way to protect their own lives and the lives of others. Gun violence is an epidemic in the United States. Every day, 100 Americans are killed with guns. Firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens. This Day of Awareness comes days after 15-year-old Shamaya Salz was shot and killed on Columbus's south side, and just weeks after 14-year-old Jaquan Sharp was shot and killed in our city. Nearly 1,700 children and teens die by gun homicide every year. For children under the age of 13, these gun homicides most frequently occur in the home and are often connected to domestic or family violence. In an average month, 52 American women are shot to death by an intimate partner, and many more are injured. Access to a gun in a domestic violence situation makes it five times more likely that a woman will be killed. Gun violence is not just a safety issue, but a public health issue that impacts our neighborhoods and our entire city. The effects of gun violence extend far beyond fatal casualties. Gun violence shapes the lives of millions of Americans who witness it, know someone who was shot, or live in fear of the next shooting. We must do more to protect our children and families and our community. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I ask Councilmember Mitch Brown to share some additional remarks as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Faver. The proliferation of firearms is becoming a significant problem throughout our community and throughout the world, and especially in the United States. Year-to-date, the Columbus Division of Police has submitted to their firearms, or to the property room, over 1,000 firearms. Year-to-date, that's from January to May, over 1,000 firearms. Each year, we collect, or I say "we," the Columbus Division of Police collects over 2,600 guns. Over 2,600 guns are being confiscated and submitted to our property room. Each firearm undeniably has the potential for falling into the hands of a child. It can be used to commit a crime, or tragically take someone's life, as you've already described. I commend my colleague for taking a stance on how these deadly weapons are impacting not only our community, but the communities, again, across this country. We collectively must take a stand against gun violence to save lives and to make our community safer. It's not just wearing orange. We have to take a more aggressive approach to dealing with gun violence. What is going on right now is certainly, undeniably to this council, unacceptable. We're taking a moment to acknowledge it, to bring everyone's attention. I can guarantee you that in the near future, we'll be looking at some legislation about what we can do about making sure there are gun safety locks in households, whether or not we do or do not hold parents accountable when a gun is used in the commission of a crime. All of that plays a part, but the mere fact of the matter is that we, as a community, as a nation, have to deal with this problem about guns. And there isn't a single person who doesn't understand, or has not to some degree been impacted by gun violence, and it is unnecessary. Certainly, you're right, Councilmember Faver. It is a public health crisis. We collectively are trying to bring more attention to the issue, and I certainly appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Wearing orange today, or any day for that matter, serves as a visual affirmation of the right of every American to live a life free from gun violence. Let us take a brief moment of silence for those impacted by gun violence in our community and around our country. Thank you. I would encourage everyone to continue to wear orange this week, and please feel free to grab a ribbon if you did not receive one when you came into council today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one resolution and one announcement this evening. I'd like to invite up Buwan Pekarel, Sarah Abu Rashad, and Representatives from the Community Refugee and Immigration Services, Chris, to the podium, as I introduce ordinance number 190X 2019 to recognize the strength, courage, and perseverance of millions of refugees, and to celebrate June 20th, 2019, as World Refugee Day in the city of Columbus. The United Nations General Assembly adopted Resolution 5576 on December 4th, 2000, to officially recognize June 20th as World Refugee Day. Over 68 million people around the world have been forced to leave their home, and each day that number increases by 44,000. More than 16,000 refugees have resettled in the central Ohio area since 1983, with most of them arriving within the last 10 years. The city of Columbus has a proud history of welcoming refugees by offering a safe and thriving environment to support displaced persons and families seeking a new beginning. There is a network of resettlement agencies who are actively working with the most vulnerable refugees in Columbus, regardless of their country of origin or religious beliefs. Through resiliency, self-sufficiency, and entrepreneurship, local refugees have established new lives and built networks of support and commerce, which have had a positive impact in Columbus for new and existing residents. The local refugee community contributes an estimated $1.6 billion to the Columbus economy and supports over 21,000 jobs in the region. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate June 20th, 2019, as World Refugee Day here in Columbus, and renews its commitment to welcoming and supporting all new residents in the city of Columbus. Buwan, Sarah, the floor is yours.
We'd like to, Namaste, everyone.
Namaste.
We'd like to thank you. Thank the city of Columbus for recognizing World Refugee Day. This means a lot. This means that our existence is being recognized. One day, we were thrown out of the country because of our looks, because what we, what language we speak, what cloth we wear, and what kind of faith we believe in. And because of this country's great welcoming attitude, we have been given a second chance to live our life. So thank you, everyone, for giving us this opportunity. And again, we'd like to thank city of Columbus for giving, making our home city of Columbus. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy and Council President Harden. My name is Sarah Abu Rashad. I am 19, a Columbus resident and a student at Denison University. And I came to the U.S. six years ago, like many, without knowing any English. And today, words have become my most treasured asset. I've become a poet since I moved here, and I'm so grateful for our city that keeps saying yes, yes to opportunity, yes to newcomers, and yes to all types of people. Columbus's reputation precedes it, and we must applaud ourselves for all that we stand for. But being grateful is not enough. My hope and my demand is that we, that you, continue to fight, to resist, and to protest the atrocities we are witnessing at the border and on our very streets. What is local is only being amplified on national levels. And being American is above all being human and caring for and loving and protecting all humans. So thank you for having us. Thank you for welcoming us, and please remember us every single day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Councilmember Brown.
There we go. Sorry, new microphones. I'm still adjusting. I just wanted to take a brief moment to say thank you. It is, I appreciate the leadership of Councilmember Remy in bringing the resolution, and I, you know, when I hear the, the thanks that both of you gave for Columbus being such a welcoming city, that's very touching. But I think seeing all of you assembled here and knowing the good work of Chris, it's really the city that should be thanking all of you for what you do to make Columbus Columbus. One in 10 people in our city, in our region, is born outside this country. We literally wouldn't be the same city without you. We literally wouldn't be Columbus without the refugees who live here. You are part of our fabric, and I appreciate the hard work that Chris does, in particular, to make sure that Columbus can continue to be a city that I'm really proud to raise my family in, because of that diversity and because of what's added. You know, we have a welcoming attitude as a city because it makes sense for us, because of the economic impact of refugees and immigrants, but also because it's what's right. And I don't want to lose that, that it's about what's morally right. And Columbus is, one of the 614 Day speakers said this, "Columbus is who we are because of the people who reside here." And that's each and every one of you and each and every one of the people you serve at Chris. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tim Brown. It's an exciting day, June 20th. Looking forward to it. You know, I echo the sentiments that she portrayed, and we're excited as we work towards having a naturalization ceremony here July 25th in chambers. And so we're bringing that vibrancy to, right here, to to, right here, to City Hall. So, super excited for that. Thank you, like she said, for all that you do, and for somebody who lives along Morris Road and, you know, watched the transformation and helped to build that corridor. Many of you know of restaurants, or own restaurants, and shops, and, you know, that's just really the picture of diversity up there. So, thanks again, and if there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Finally, I just want to remind everybody that we're hosting Community Hours on our day off, Monday, June 17, at Tim Horton's at 1815 Morris Road, from 5:00 to 6:30. And then on Tuesday, June 25, at Upper Cup Coffee at 79 Parsons, from 3:30 to 5:00. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one resolution. It's Resolution Number 0191X-2019. I'm going to ask for Kojo Ababio and Sheryl Graffanino to come towards the podium, please. This resolution is to recognize June as the National Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Month and acknowledge the work of Kojo Ababio and his impact on the residents of Columbus Franklin County and the Greater Linden community in terms of consuming the recommended number of servings of fresh fruits and vegetables each day. Whereas June is National Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Month, an opportunity to bring awareness to the health benefits of consuming more than, more fresh fruits and vegetables. Less than 25% of adults in Franklin County report consuming the recommended five or more servings of fresh fruits and vegetables per day. The USDA recommends that people fill half of their plates with fruits and vegetables for each meal, meeting with the recommended five to nine servings each day. An increasing fruit and vegetable intake each day can help individuals to maintain healthy weight, reduce the risk of heart disease, decrease high blood pressure, and also lower the risk of the number of cancers. And whereas Columbus City Council adopted the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan in November of 2016, demonstrating the city's ongoing commitment to ensuring that each resident have improved access to healthy food, affordable food, and local food, as well as to increase the education and resources regarding healthy food. Columbus and Franklin County, Ohio, are home to more than 250 community gardens, 25 farmers' markets, 388 farms, 15 urban farms, and many food-related businesses, plus numerous organizations that address issues related to food production and nutrition for the residents of the City of Columbus and Franklin County. And whereas, a new Harvest Cafe, which was opened by Kojo in 2005 as a community arts center in the heart of Linden, the establishment initially opened as an art gallery. However, Kojo recognized the necessity of providing healthy fruits and vegetables to the community, transferred the venue into a, which was located in a recognized food desert, into a place where individuals could learn to eat healthy, local, organic food in their community. The restaurant offers such produce as cabbage, yellow, squash, zucchini, green peppers, and the new Harvest staple is collard greens, are planted and grown right there on the property. Kojo also has earned a reputation as a good neighbor, often buying produce from other local community gardens in the Linden area, like the Four Seasons City Farm and others. His commitment to growing and serving local, affordable, and healthy food has improved the community known for its absence of healthy, affordable food into a beacon of hope. Kojo was recently recognized as the Community Gardener of the Year, and his healthy food advocacy supports the community-based food resources, like the recent opening of the Saraga Grocery International Store in Linden. The store opened on Friday, May 31st, a little over a year after the Kroger in Linden closed its doors in this community. Be it resolved that this council, on the City of Columbus, this council is hereby recognized June as the National Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Month and acknowledged the work of Kojo Ababio and his impact on the residents of Columbus and Franklin County and the Greater Linden community in terms of consuming the recommended number of servings of healthy fruits and vegetables each day, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And now, I'm going to ask Sheryl Graffanino, who leads our Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan for the City of Columbus, to share some remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Harden, and members of council. It's a pleasure to join you in recognizing the important role that fruits and vegetables play in the health and well-being of our community. As you're aware, not everyone in our community has fair and equitable access to the fruits and vegetables that they need to experience optimal health and live their best life. The Local Food Systems Strategies Team at Columbus Public Health appreciates your ongoing support of the implementation of the Local Food Action Plan to help improve access to and education about healthy food, affordable food, and local food in our community. The recently released Local Food Action Plan 2018 Annual Report, which is available on our website at www.columbus.gov/lfap, highlights many of the new places our residents across the city can access fresh, affordable, and often, local produce. These include city-led efforts, like the establishment of the Linden Farmers Market, which will open its second season on July 7, as well as community-led efforts, like the All Peoples Fresh Market on the South Side, the Lower Lights Jubilee Market in Franklinton, and of course, the very recent opening of the Saraga International Grocery in the former Northern Lights store. But one of our longest-standing pillars and efforts to increase the quantity and quality of fresh fruits and vegetables in our neighborhoods has been the City of Columbus Community Garden Grant. Since 2010, we've provided more than $300,000 to 280 community garden projects, and just this past April, a total of $38,000 was awarded to 32 projects. I am pleased to stand beside the 2018 Growing to Green Community Gardener of the Year, Kojo Ababio, this evening, as he accepts this resolution in recognition of National Fruit and Vegetable Month. Kojo is a longtime leader in efforts to grow fruits and vegetables in, with, and for the Linden community. Through Amavira's Garden and the New Harvest Cafe, Kojo has effectively leveraged the City of Columbus Community Garden Grant funds to make fresh fruits and vegetables available to his neighbors. I welcome Kojo to the stand. Podium.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, Councilmember President Harding. You know, this month being the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Month is, I think, is so important that people start to more or less not think about just, you know, the inability of us being accessed to fresh fruits and vegetables, but think about more or less how we can sit and eat with our children, some fresh kale, cut up some fruits and vegetables during the summer months, instead of always opening up a can of something. You know, in our community, we have a lot of dollar stores. We have a lot of issues in our community. I recently went to a function in Cleveland, and they stated that African-Americans would die in 33 years faster than everybody else because of inability to have access to fresh fruits and vegetables. So, I think that this resolution is going to speak volumes to people about why is it so important that we consume fresh fruits and vegetables? Not only is it very important that we consume fresh fruits and vegetables, but it's important to go out and grow your stuff. So, the most radical thing that you can do is to go out and grow some food right now. So, I want people to activate their activism, get involved, and start growing food. So, on behalf of the Linden Plan, the One Linden Plan, and our great leader, Carla Williams-Scott, tomorrow, the mayor's going to be having a dinner over at Douglas Recreation Center. We're going to reiterate this resolution to him, and we want him to support this thing throughout the month of June. So, we thank you for this resolution, and we thank you for your time.
That's awesome.
Well, yeah, can I have my assistant? Nobody ever knows about Tress. Everybody hears about Kojo, but behind the scenes, there's this young lady. So, I want to introduce you to Tressa Augustine.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say that Kojo is a great example of leadership. I'm a volunteer. I work a little part-time job to make, you know, money for cable and Netflix, but other than that, my time is dedicated to volunteers, because he's an amazing example. I've been a volunteer at New Harvest for 10 years, and it's been an amazing opportunity to interact and intersect with community. And so, it's very, very easy to do the right thing when you have such an amazing leader. And so, for the continued, consistent leadership, we just thank Kojo. He's always there, sunup to sundown, and without him, a lot of the work that we do wouldn't be possible. So, on behalf of the residents of Linden and the folks who he's always helping out, thank you for thanking him.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for being a volunteer for 10 years. That's pretty significant, significant. Thank you so much.
Finally, I have two really important resolutions, and as I read the first one, I'm going to ask Dr. Jevon Adam Gaston and Mr. Dimitri Gaston to come forward.
Tonight, I'm introducing Resolution 0176X-2019. This resolution is to celebrate the contributions of Dr. Jevon Adams Gaston to the Ohio State University and to the broader Columbus community, and to congratulate her as being named President-Elect of Norfolk State University. Since she joined Ohio State University in 2009, Dr. J., as she is affectionately known, has created and shaped the extraordinary student experience for countless Buckeyes. That is why she will become the seventh president of the historic Norfolk State University. I cannot think of anyone more deserving than Dr. J. I don't usually read resolutions, but I thought a portion of this resolution speaks to her strong background and what she's done here in the city. So, it says, "Whereas, under Dr. J.'s leadership, student organizations have grown by 39%. Eighty-one percent of undergraduate students have engaged in some type of involvement, activity. Buckeye Serve, Ohio State's Alternative Spring Break Program, has grown to one of the largest in the nation. The Ohio Union has opened its doors to hundreds of thousands of visitors. The Student Affairs Development Program has gained more than $29 million in donations, pledges. And whereas Dr. Adams Gaston's commitment to diversity and inclusivity and desire to help others reach their fullest potential shines brightest in many aspects, even her office." I would just like to say, Dr. Gaston, how much we have benefited from you being in our community. I did not go to the Ohio State University, but felt your energy and your presence well beyond the confines of the school. We are so grateful for your leadership, what you have meant to so many people who have now matriculated through and now are part of the Columbus community. Your impact will certainly be felt in this community for decades to come. We're so grateful. As a graduate of a historically black college and university, I'm so, so excited that you will take your talents to an HBCU like Norfolk State. Like, that's a huge, huge opportunity, and I am just so excited for you. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. Dr. J., I just want to say we're going to miss you here, and, but thank you for making such a tremendous, you've been a tremendous asset to this community, working with our young people. And they're the most important people we can work with, our young children and young people. They're our future, and thank you for allowing them to have opportunities to be able to work with people that were different from themselves, to be able to grow, so that they will be able to be great assets, not only to our city, our state, our country, but to our world. You will absolutely be missed. You have been such a tremendous role model, a person of ethics, a person that cares, and of compassion. You're just, we're going to miss you here. So, congratulations on this amazing opportunity for you. Wish you just great success as you continue, you and your family, great success as you move to another community, to, again, to make the world shine, people shine a little brighter, and make the world a better place for all. Congratulations, and may God continue to bless you and your family.
Yeah. Dr. J., the podium's yours.
Council President Harden and all the members of the council, Councilwoman Tyson and others, let me start by saying I am truly humbled and grateful for this high honor. One of the things that happens when you come to a new environment is you don't know how you're going to be received, and I can say that Columbus is truly home for myself and my life partner, Dimitri Gaston, without whom I could do none of the things that I have been able to accomplish. We really are a team. I thank you because universities are places of great learning and great opportunities for students, but when you have a great city that partners with the university in the way that this city of Columbus has partnered with our university, particularly our students, embracing them, helping them to see that they are a part of a larger world, and as such, they have many opportunities to engage. The council president and others came to our Town and Gown International Conference, where we had people from all over the world, and they still talk about the fact that Columbus was so embracing of them, and that they were such a part of that opportunity. The Columbus Welcome that all of you have been a part of over the last nine years, 10, almost 10 years, I am so grateful for what this community has done for our students, 40% of whom, when they graduate, want to stay in this region. That is a testament to how wonderful they feel and are embraced. Universities can choose to have the ivory walls and keep others out and not allow their students out. We have chosen to be a part of this community. We have chosen to say, "This is our home." And my husband, Dimitri, and I have chosen to say, "This is our home." I didn't know it would be so hard to leave, but it is amazing what you have allowed us to accomplish, and we are forever grateful. As I go forth and we go forth to our next assignment, what we know is we take Columbus with us, and it is the model of excellence. Thank you all so very, very much.
With that, I move for passage. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorrance, Faver, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
And lastly, and certainly not least, I have Resolution 0186X-2019. I'd like to ask Ms. A.J. Casey, who's the Executive Director of Stonewall and Board Chair, Mr. Rob Podlager, to come forward. Stonewall Columbus, Resolution 0186X-2019, is to recognize Stonewall Columbus for their 38th year of service and to celebrate the 2019 Pride Parade and Festival. Resolution 0176X reads as follows. Stonewall Columbus was founded in June of 1981, on the 12th anniversary of the historic Stonewall riots in New York City. And whereas, June, every June, Stonewall Columbus hosts the Pride Holiday, a month-long celebration that culminates in the annual Pride Parade that, and festival that attracts over 500,000 attendees. And whereas, Pride not only serves as a means to bring the different communities of Ohio together in recognizing the courage and fortitude of the LGBTQI community in their ongoing fight for equality and acceptance, but it also serves as a beacon of hope and motivation for those who still feel marginalized by society. So, be it resolved that the City of Columbus recognizes Stonewall Columbus for their 38th year of service and celebrates the 2019 Pride Parade and Festival. We're so excited to be a part of this celebration. Following council this evening at 8:30, we will gather on the west side of the building to light City Hall, and I think this is the fifth year that we've done that. So, we encourage all Columbus residents to come out and join as we kick off Pride Celebration Week here in Columbus, and celebrate all the hard work of Stonewall, who host this amazing, largest in the country, I believe, Pride.
In the region.
In the region. We can say, you know, in the country, yeah. But we're so, so proud of the work of Stonewall, of the board, for not just the parade, that's the visible stuff that we get to show the community, but the other 364 days of the year for the services that you provide to our community. Are there any comments from my colleagues? I'm going to turn the floor over to A.J. DeRop.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Councilmember Dorrance, Brown, Brown, Tyson, Remy, in favor. I am Rob Podlager. This 50th year in celebrating Stonewall, the riots have not been lost on me. I'm fortunate to work as the CEO of the Seamer Institute. I oversee war- This 50th year in celebrating Stonewall, the riots have not been lost on me. I'm fortunate to work as the CEO of the Seymour Institute. I oversee work in 50 cities throughout the country to help families find financial stability, housing stability, equity, and opportunity, but that's my day job. My volunteer job is the president of the Board of Stonewall, and this is my second year as president. I have committed myself and the organization over the past two years to remember where we have come from without forgetting the pain of Pride of '17. Stonewall has worked continuously since Pride of '17 to be better, be more inclusive, build bridges, inform new relationships, many with those who felt left out and not welcomed at 1160 North High Street. Tonight, I want to thank you for your leadership in allowing me and my husband and many in our community to live in a city that is affirming. But I also ask that you continue to sit at the table with Stonewall to hear from those in my community who are marginalized and feel that they are not welcome and they do not live in an affirming city. Stonewall Columbus needs your continued and renewed support to provide services and programming to those in our community that are marginalized, to provide them equity so they have the opportunity to succeed. Even though we are celebrating the 50th year since the Stonewall riots, our work is not done. Thank you for your time, and here is A.J. Casey.
Thank you, Rob. And to President Harden, President Pro Tim Brown, and the members of council, I stand here again tonight to say thank you to all of you. And I want to say thank you to Rob Podlager, to the Chairman of the Board. Under his leadership, this organization truly gets to live a new beginning, gets to start again, and gets to be better, stronger, wiser. And it has been my privilege in these six months that I've been Executive Director of Stonewall to work with Rob, and I just want to say thank you publicly because we would not be a better organization today without his leadership. So it was June 28, 1969, and New York City Police Department executes yet another raid, a routine raid, on the Stonewall Inn. Inside are people of the LGBTQI community, taking refuge, as it were, being together in one of the few places where they can gather and be themselves. And as the police raid this building, overtake the inn, this time, the patrons of the Stonewall Inn refuse to succumb to the police. And as one of the patrons is being dragged out in handcuffs, they turn to the gathered crowd outside and yell, "What are you going to do about this?" And with those famous and fateful words, they launched what became known as the Stonewall Riots and began the modern era of gay rights and the gay rights movement. Every pride in this city, every pride in this state, every pride celebration in this country follows as a result of that fateful night in 1969. And it was in 1981 that the local activists here in the city of Columbus got together and created what they called the Stonewall Union. And they gave me their pen, one of the pens from 1989. And in 1980, I'm sorry, I said 1981. And in 1981, they began what was the first Columbus Pride. I just had an opportunity to look at some photographs from those early Pride marches back in the 1980s. And there were about 200 marchers in 1980. And in the one photograph, you can see the marchers all marching down High Street on one side of the street, and on the other side, traffic is moving full speed because they didn't close the streets for the parade back then. Today, we have over 12,000 people registered to march in this year's Pride Parade, and that's up 50% from the 8,000 who registered to march last year. This literally is going to be the biggest pride in Columbus history, and it's going to be certainly the largest pride in this region. So because of the welcoming and affirming city that we have all created, that your leadership has allowed us to enjoy, we truly are going to see thousands and thousands and thousands of people, gay, straight, cisgender, transgender, allies, coming together to demonstrate what this city truly is all about. And that is a city where all of us have an opportunity to move forward. And I say that knowing that our work is not done as a city, as a community. We still have work to do to get equal rights, fair rights for everybody in the LGBTQI community, but I know, under your leadership and with your participation and support, we're going to be able to help make that happen here in the city. I also want to say, as I close, that we understand that every pride is somebody's first pride. And that's not to say that every pride is somebody's first opportunity to celebrate and march down the street and have a party. When we say every pride is somebody's first pride, what we're saying and acknowledging is that every pride is somebody's first opportunity to see people like them, some questioning, fearful person who doesn't know how to live out loud and live authentically. When they come to this celebration, they're not just marching. Some of them are truly finding themselves, finding the role models that allow them to emerge from fear and shame and stand proudly with the hundreds of thousands of people who come to Columbus to make that moment possible for them. I've heard stories of people who say pride saved their lives. Pride showed them that they could live a life that was fulfilling and happy. And it's because of you that we are able to continue this tradition, and this year, hundreds of thousands of people will be here to celebrate with us. And so we thank you for the resolution. We thank you for your participation and your leadership. And 50 years from now, when people look back and they say, "What did you do about it?", you'll be able to say, among the many things that you've done, "You did this," and we are forever grateful. Thank you.
With that, I move for passage. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Are there any comments by our elected officials? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by city clerk? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1215, 1315, 1339, 1382, 1463, 1532, 1507, 1508, and 1509-2019.
We don't have any speakers on the... We have one speaker, I apologize, on the first reading portion of the agenda. Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 1508-2019, and the Health and Human Services, welcome to... Welcome back to council, Mr. Wilkins.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. I'm in favor for more money for the Council of Arts and the neighborhood, $49,007, not to be $5,000, maybe just more money, and maybe have this three times a year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read these into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 187X, 188X-2019, Finance Committee ordinance 1500-2019, Public Safety Committee ordinance 1447-2019, Veterans and Senior Affairs Committee ordinance 1493-2019, Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1247, 1276, 1324, 1341, 1343, 1351, 1358, 1373, 1411, 1457-2019, Technology Committee ordinance is 1317, 1423, 1441, 1466-2019, Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1371, 1405, and 1465-2019, Economic Development Committee Resolution 184X-2019, ordinance is 1451, 1496, 1497, 1566, and 1567-2019, Environment Committee ordinance is 1220 and 1456-2019, Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 1502-2019, Workforce Development Committee ordinance 1559-2019, and appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0089 and A0090-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We see no further speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. May I have a motion for approval of these items as an aid of consent? By voice, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 1493-2019, 0184X-2019, 1566-2019, and 1567-2019, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson? President Harden?
Yes, consent agenda carries with the noted exceptions. We would now proceed with the second reading of 30-day entailed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. President Pro Tim Brown chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we have Resolution 0178X-2019 to adopt the 2020 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. Passage of this resolution and the filing of this tax budget with Franklin, Fairfield, and Delaware County Budget Commissions will fulfill requirements set forth in the Ohio Revised Code for the City of Columbus to receive local government funds, money collected by the state of Ohio and shared with political subdivisions like Columbus via the counties. The Ohio Revised Code requires that a public hearing be held on the tax budget, which will take place at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. We will hear any public comment at that time. In order to accommodate the hearing, I move to table Resolution 0178X-2019 until the June 24 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
May I move to the Recreation and Parks Committee?
Please.
We have ordinance 1321-2019 to authorize the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks to enter into a grant agreement with Gladden Community House in support of its youth team sports program and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative subfund. As I bring a few comments, can Dan Mormon please come to the podium? Gladden Community House has served Franklinton and the Near West Side since 1905. For more than four decades, they have provided a year-round, community-based team sports program for community children. In 2018, the program engaged 536 children and 57 community volunteer coaches, providing 14,677 hours of healthy, constructive, and positive sporting activities. Mr. Mormon, can you tell us a little bit more about Gladden's youth team sports program?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Brown, for supporting us and the rest of the members here tonight. So an amazing thing about Gladden Community House Team Sports is that we do outreach and we include, and we also want to bring the community closer together. So how do we do that? And I do have a few pictures up here that I'm going to show you. And this is usually, we show the youngest and the cutest first, and this is our five- and six-year-old soccer team, and they play in the kids' league soccer program. Now, the person that's not in this picture is one of our coaches. And this particular coach has been with Gladden and around Gladden for about 30 years. He's a huge member of the Franklinton community, and two of his grandsons are playing. And I managed to have a conversation with him at our field there at the Franklinton Youth Park, and he told me that he recently talked to his doctor, and his doctor said that he was doing better medically. And he had said that he had prayed that he would do better because he's the only male, basically, in the family that's helping raise his grandkids. So that's kind of the connectivity that we're after as well. So this is a little older group, and this picture was taken at Saunders Park, which is part of the city's contribution to the kids' league soccer program. We've been doing this for about 25 years, and the city offers their field to us that we can include teams from across inner-city Columbus. It's our 25th year doing it, and we accept basically all kinds of groups, settlement houses, recreation centers. We have a few... Few what? Oh, a few football teams this year. This is new. So we have two football teams that are actually participating in this program. Let's see, here we go. This is our indoor program. You see our players there, and then you see the two yellow-shirted folks in the back. They actually have come through the program and now are referees. And the one, of course, on the left, that's Tyler, and then he came through the Silesian Boys and Girls Club and the Boys and Girls Club on Gift Street. And then the other young man on the right, that's my son Jared, and he's got the long hair, and that's what I used to look like. And so we do allow long-haired referees in our program. This is our seven-to-nine-year-old basketball team. Now, the one thing that I learned is that it's better to encourage parents who want to coach from the sideline to actually coach the team. It works better. And so part of the outreach is to figure out which parents really want to help and to go after them, say, "Hey, we need you to help us out." And so that's part of our outreach, and they enjoy it, we enjoy it, and the kids really connect with them. This is a little rougher group. This is the older ones, and I know they're not as cute as the younger ones, but, you know, the older ones need it just as much and even more than the younger ones. The younger ones, there's so many programs that are available to them, but this is our JV basketball team, and the gentleman there coaching actually came through our program as a kid and now continues to coach with us. There's another younger group, a 10-to-12 basketball team, and you'll see the same coach there and the other coach there actually came through our program and also is come back to help us. There's our girls' team, and this is, yeah, the 14-and-a-girls team at Schiller. And this is our high school team. High schoolers are hard to grab onto, but basketball is a big one. So we outreach to them, they come to our center, and we show them a good time. Something we tried new this year was, after basketball, not everyone wanted to play soccer, so we did a three-on-three program in which the kids came for half an hour, did some training, and then played each other three-on-three. And there's another picture of the same three-on-three. There's a little basketball players, five, six-year-olds. It's one of our cheerleaders. Actually, that was not actually taken during a game, that was taken during our Halloween party. So I couldn't find the actual picture for the... when they were cheering, but anyway, that's one of them. And this guy's really famous. I don't know if you know who this is, but he's a Recreation and Parks guy, and he's retired, named Kevin, and he is very significant in working with Gladden over the years at Schiller Rec Center with baseball and basketball. We appreciate everything that he's done to work with us. This is our swimming program. Down the street from us is the West Central School, and we've managed to partner with it. Down the street from us is the West Central School, and we've managed to partner with them, and they allow us to come one day a week to use their pool. There's a close-up selfie of the group. This is, we experimented a little bit with biking. We have the Franklinton Bike Shop down the street from us, and throughout the years, they've helped us with bike rodeos and did some training and taught them how to fix the bikes and also growth the neighborhood. We're going to try to do something again with them in August. But they're wonderful, and we stay connected with them. This was an experiment, frisbee golf. We've tried this. Matter of fact, the previous Recreation Director, Steve Almiller, I sat down with him, and we talked about trying to build a Franklinton-wide frisbee golf that would include biking. You would bike to one place, and then you would do the frisbee golf, and you'd bike to another place. Both of us got busy, we never got to finish it. But anyway, it was a great idea. This is our floor hockey group, and a real important gentleman there. He was actually a board member, and he starred the Franklinton Gardens, and he was a coach for our hockey team. He soon passed away, but we really loved him, enjoyed him, and Patrick, yeah.
Ms.
But he was a great community member. Okay, so I'm supposed to hurry up here. So this is a volleyball group.
Got a lot of legislation still to get through.
Okay, sorry. All right, so let me just point out one more thing. Let me go through this. All right, so at the very end of all of our programs, we have a banquet, and that brings everybody together. This is where the-- a little tradition where the players are running around the bases, tagging each base, and the parents shaking their hands. So thank you again for everything you've done for us. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Mormon, for what you do on the Near West Side. And I was out on a rainy day, rainy Saturday soccer tournament, and even with the rain, there were so many kids playing their hearts out, and, to your point, a lot of parent coaches from the sidelines. It was a really great thing to see. So I really appreciate your work, and we really appreciate you being here tonight for us to move for passage on this ordinance. Before I do so, are there any questions or comments? All right, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, that is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. We have a busy night in Public Utilities. The first ordinance number is 1370-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Hazen &amp; Sawyer for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio-Solid Land Application Improvements Project to authorize the transfer of $319,453 in the expenditure of up to $1,543,453 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget. This project will increase and expand the use of recycled bio-solids in the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant by providing infrastructure to make good use of them through land application. This project provides a beneficial environmental advantage that is specifically called for by the City of Columbus Green Action Plan. Also, land application is currently the lowest-cost method for bio-solid utilization, so expansion of this benefit is both beneficial and uses-- uses and presents an economical advantage as well. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1383-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend a service contract with Burmex Inc. to provide water meter-reading services for the Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Water Operating Fund. DPU began an automated meter infrastructure implementation in late 2018, early 2019. The implementation of this plan may take anywhere from three to five years. The intent of this contract is to bridge the gap between the start of the automated meter-reading implementation and its conclusion, and where is expected that most meters will be able to be read remotely. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number 1420-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities renew the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Hatch Chester, Ohio, Inc. for the Hapcremine Water Plant Concrete Rehabilitation Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $1,307,900 from the Water General Obligation Bond Fund, and to authorize an amendment to the 2019 capital improvement budgets. This project will rehabilitate deteriorated concrete around the treatment basins of the Division's largest water treatment plant, and prevent further and more costly damage that could occur if the rehabilitation was postponed, and to extend the life of this very important plant. The project is part of the city's ongoing efforts to maintain a reliable supply of safe drinking water for its customers, which will result in sustainable economic growth well into the future. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number 1428-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities renew an engineering agreement with DLZ, Ohio, Inc. for the Lower Olentangi Tunnel Phase 1 and 2, to transfer within and expend up to $5,482,693.30 from the Sanitary Sewer Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2019 capital improvements budget for the Division of Sewer and Drainage. This project was identified in the 2015 Wet Water Management Plan Update Report, which was developed with input from numerous stakeholders and submitted to the Ohio EPA. This project will help mitigate sewer overflows in the Olentangi River as described in the report. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Last, we have ordinance number 1454-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer services provided for fiscal year 2019, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,200,000 from the Sewer Operating-- the Sewerage System Operating Fund. This agreement authorizes discharge of sewage from Delaware County into the sewer system of the City of Columbus, and from the City of Columbus system into the Delaware County sewer system, in order to avoid duplication of wastewater treatment. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 1473-2019 to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Gudenkauf Corporation for the Signal Installation Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase EPID-99733 Rebid Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $927,057.60 from the Information Services Taxable Debt Fund, and up to $12,593,257.9 from the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the Signal Installation Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase EPID-99733 Rebid Project, and to declare an emergency. This contract includes installing messenger wire, conduit, pole boxes, fiber optic cable, ethernet switches, traffic flow monitors, and communication cabinets to migrate the Columbus Traffic Signal System to the new Traffic Signal System. The limits of the project are throughout Franklin County and southern Delaware County within 95 miles of fiber optic cable to be installed to connect 250 traffic signals. Some of the major corridors include South High Street, Hillier Rome Road, and New Albany Road. Work will also be done in the Polaris and Easton shopping regions. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all we have in the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. We have two items in the Economic Development Committee this evening. First, I'd like to invite Franz Geiger, Managing Partner of MP Limited Partnership, to the podium as I introduce ordinance number 1519-2019 to authorize the Director of Development to amend the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with the Point at Polaris Phase 1 LLC and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority to add the Point at Polaris Phase 2 LLC as a party to the agreement, to clarify the obligations and commitments of all parties to the agreement, and to allow for the exclusion from the CRA exemption that portion of the project site to be occupied by office tenants on the Phase 2 parcel that elect not to receive any of the benefits that may be associated with the foregone tax associated with a tax abatement related to Phase 2 real property improvements, and to declare an emergency. In a letter dated April 29, 2019, and subsequent discussion and email communication with representatives of Enterprise and the city, has been advised that the project site now consists of three parcels: two parcels relate to Phase 1, and a third parcel related to the second phase of the project relates to Phase 2. So additionally, Enterprise advised the city of the final scope of Phase 1 and the final scope of-- or the proposed scope of Phase 2, that a new entity will be the entity that will own the Phase 2 parcel, and so needs to be added as Enterprise and party to the agreement. So there's a lot of fancy words there. I'm going to turn the floor over to you to explain that a little bit further and put it more in layman's terms.
Well, I just wanted to thank council, and thank you, Councilmember Remy, President Harden, members of the council, for your support of Polaris and the community CRA that we have at Polaris, and the Point at Polaris in particular. That project, we had a 10-year abatement, a 100% abatement for 10 years, and that particular incentive encouraged us to invest $60 million for an office project, a mixed-use project, in which we attracted an employer that brought in 150 new jobs to Columbus. We're also engaging in Phase 2 of that project, in which we'll invest an additional $70 million into that project. The CRA has benefited-- it benefits employers because it reduces their operating expenses, and that encourages them to come into a community and hire people. And the benefit to all of us is the fact that there's payroll tax that comes from those jobs, and that becomes a win for the City of Columbus. This incentive and this help for our project has allowed us to compete with the suburbs. You know, Polaris is actually-- kind of feels like a suburb. It's the City of Columbus, but we compete with the other suburban communities more than downtown Columbus. And so I just am appreciative of the fact that the Development Department has put together incentives, and council has supported those, to allow us to compete with the suburbs and attract new employment to the area. And if employers don't want those incentives, that's great, but if-- because they're offered in other communities, we have to have them in the City of Columbus to compete. So thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Geiger. Director Shoney?
Thank you, Chair. President Harden, members of the council. Essentially, what we're doing with this legislation is actually taking a piece of the building out of the incentive. There's a prospect that we're working with MP Limited on that, for their own reasons, do not want to participate in the incentive. They don't want to follow our requirements for the incentive primarily along the reporting, for whatever reason, and so we are removing that portion of the building from the incentive, then doing the associated things with entities and making sure that we have the right people on the agreement to accommodate that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have an ordinance number 1520-2019 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a Pay as We Grow and Grow with a Plan Agreement with Metro Development for fulfillment of Northeast Pay as We Grow requirements for property located at the northeast portion of a property located at the southeast corner of Alrey Road and Warner Road, known as 5830 Alrey Road, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have this evening from the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Chair. Final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have two resolutions. The first is 1361-2019, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to grant agreement with Community Refugee and Immigration Services, they're known as CHRIS, to provide community empowering change program, to authorize the expenditure within the Emergency Human Services Fund, and to authorize an appropriation expenditure within the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to declare an emergency. CHRIS and Ms. Plummer was in council chambers this evening for the World Refugee Day, but CHRIS focuses on assisting refugees and immigrants with various services, but not limited to the adjustment of status, asylum applications, naturalization and citizenship, employment services, and English as a second language. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
First, remove from the table first.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown?
By voice.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, removed.
And now I move for passage by voice.
Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber? Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed.
Thank you. And the final ordinance is ordinance number 1433-2019, is to authorize the establishment of an impressed petty cash operating fund for the Columbus Public Health Farmers Markets to be held this summer, to authorize a transfer within the operating fund, and to authorize expenditure of $7,500 total at the-- total, and there's $2,500 per market. The Farmers Market in 2019 will begin on July 25, and then it will have another one on August 1 and August 8 at Columbus Public Health Facility. This establishes a petty cash operating fund, the amount of $7,500 for the three markets, and again, it's $2,500 for each market, for the reimbursement to farmers who accept electronic benefit transfer, EBT services, for market customers using Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program that are known as SNAP, and the Veggie SNAP Farmers Market Nutrition Incentive Program tokens as a payment during those markets. This is a really important program because individuals will use their SNAP benefits, and they can then-- they use your Ohio Directions card, and they'll provide a dollar for each SNAP benefit, and then they'll get an additional $1. So for every dollar they will spend, they'll get $2 to be able to purchase healthy fruits and vegetables at the Farmers Market. And then at the end of each market, for those Farmers Markets who have accepted the SNAP benefits and the EBT, they'll get that back in cash, and then will get reimbursed later on. So one, it helps the individuals who are purchasing the food, but it also provides resources to those farmers who are bringing those fresh fruits and vegetables to the market. So this is very important. In 2018, 200 Ohio Directions Card customers were able to redeem their SNAP EBT benefits to shop at the Columbus Public Health Farmers Market, and $3,122 in SNAP benefits, and $3,122 in produce perks were given at last year's market. And again, this aligns with the Franklin County-- Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan, getting individuals access to healthy food, affordable food, and local food. And if there are no questions or comments regarding this legislation, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Seeing no further business to come before council, one note that there is no council meeting on Monday, June 17. The next regular meeting of council is Monday, June 24, I apologize, at 5:00 p.m. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Happy Pride.